Today, February fifteen, twenty twenty-two, I'm going to call to order the virtual regular monthly meeting of the Sister Bay Village Board. Janelle, will you handle roll call, please?
Sashki.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Is Belle here yet? I don't think so. Bertle here. Duffy? Not yet. Kadunko?
Not yet.
And Nino?
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. And we can proceed. For those of you who would like to join us, we're going to stand on the count of three. We're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Do we, we have, I'm going to ask for, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum that item number four is moving to closed session. Hey, do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. I will motion that we approve both the minutes as published for the January eighteenth and January twenty-sixth board meetings.
Second. Second those.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to have Janelle summarize correspondence in just a moment. I would just like to mention ahead of time for those of our citizens who have participated in these meetings in the past. You may recall that it's common practice when we get to comments and concerns from the public that we note, we would take comments and concerns on a non-agenda item. Understanding the concern in the community about the short-term rental discussion that's limited to board trustees and staff on the agenda tonight. I will expand and allow any comments or concerns to be addressed by any members of the public on the call. But just please keep in mind, we'll listen intently to your comments, but we won't be engaging in any dialogue with anyone making commentary, so. I will ask Janelle to summarize correspondence first.
Okay, so there was a thank you letter that was received from Steve Jenkins, the Executive Director of the D C E D C for the donation that the village made to the D C E D C's annual investor campaign. Then there was a letter that was received from Ann Renard, the Chair of the Board of Directors for the D C E D C. In her letter, Ms. Renard indicates that Steve Jenkins has resigned as the Executive Director of that organization and will be leaving his post on June third. Ms. Renard stresses that Mr. Jenkins' decision to leave had nothing to do with the organization, the staff members, or the D C E D C Board. It was a decision that was based upon a personal matter. There was a funding guide that was prepared by Finley, the consulting firm that was hired by the D C E D C to conduct the broadband infrastructure engineering assessment. We received a letter and shore protection permit from the D N R for the Zog property that is located at twenty-four sixty-eight Sunnyside Road. There was also.
Now, could I break in a second? That is Warren, it should be Warren Zog.
Oh.
Where the D N R got that name, but.
Okay.
And also, also that work has been completed and all contingencies have been cleared up, so we're set on that.
Okay. Then there was a thank you letter that was received from the Door County Coastal Byway Commission for the donation the village made for website redesign project. There was a press release that was received from the Door County Fire Chiefs Association. And in that document, Chief Chris Hecht of the Sister Bay Liberty Grove Fire Department indicates that an anonymous donor has made a matching fund challenge and will donate up to seventy-five thousand dollars so that funds can be raised for the purchase of several automatic external defibrillators that will be placed in key locations throughout the county. Finally, there was a thank you letter that was received from the Sister Bay Historical Society for the matching funds donation that the village made to the Little Sister Resort Project. Now, Rob, I did receive two letters concerning the short-term rental regulations. Do you want me to read them now or read them during that agenda item? You're on mute.
Yeah, let's read them now, Janelle.
Okay. First, there was a letter from Michael Surveys. My name is Michael Surveys. I have been a full-time resident of Door County for over fourteen years. We have been operating two short-term rentals for over eleven years. In those eleven years, we have only had one complaint from a neighbor about a guest that was parking on a street which does not allow parking, and we resolved that with a simple phone call to the guest. This is the same experience the vast majority of S T R owners have had. As Door County aims to address how best to properly manage the volume of visitors in Door County and what ordinances to put in place in each municipality, we want to be sure the voice of those who own short-term rentals is heard. We love Door County and our neighborhoods and want to be good neighbors and citizens. As we have worked with other towns, we found that we have a lot in common and have significant agreement on how best to address issues brought to the town board's attention. It's important to note the vast majority of homes that host guests have wonderful relations with their neighbors. In fact, many of the neighbors rent those properties for special family gatherings. But as we all know, a small percentage of bad apples can damage the reputation of the vast majority. Just like you, we think those hosts that don't properly manage their properties well should be held accountable. We agree with noise, parking, and occupancy limitations and enforcement. And we also believe in the tourism zone good neighbor best practices. To that end, we have formed the Door County Vacation Rental, Vacation Rental Association to provide education and have a Facebook page, home sharing hosts of Door County with over four hundred members. Door County Vacation Rental Association aim is to enhance home sharing experiences for hosts, neighbors, and guests through education, best practices, and creating a more welcoming and equitable home sharing community. Many of us have been in Door County for generations. We invest in and care for our homes. We have a high priority on being good neighbors. We want to be part of the solution for Sister Bay and request to work together with you to develop solutions that are well-informed and advance our shared priorities. We'd be happy to share a model ordinance we've developed working with other towns. I know mutually beneficial solutions that reflect what's best for all residents and guests in Sister Bay are achievable. Below are some areas of the current draft ordinance we'd like to discuss. Section five sub eight A, I agree with, we would like to have more clarity on what constitution constitutes a violation, like guests lighting off fireworks or parking where they are not allowed to park after we have given them instructions and rules to follow. How would this be handled with a residential property owner, a call to the resident? The same would be fair to an S T R owner or property manager. Section five sub eights of D, consider changing to a thirty-day window after being notified of a violation to pay fees, taxes, or forfeitures owed to the village. Section seven sub five sub A, sub B, and sub C, pets. Totally agree with following municipal codes in place on all residences. Requirements, why should S T Rs be signed out from private residence? How would a pet owner at an S T R be going to church with their family if they cannot leave a pet inside the rental dwelling? It seems fair that this would be the same for all in the neighborhood. Section seven sub E, request you consider extending the seven-day notice to thirty days of notifying neighboring properties within three hundred feet of the property owner resident agent change. Section nine B, remedied a violation, changed from immediately to ten-day window because some remediation may require contractor. Section nine is especially concerning to me. Most of us are extremely conscientious hosts. However, even the best hosts, no matter the screening process, can run into a guest who does not read or follow the rules. Section nine of the ordinance is an issue of probability. Stay in business long enough and have enough guests and an event may occur, no matter how vigilant the host or property owner. This could happen to any homeowner in the neighborhood. If there is an issue that needs to be addressed, a simple resident remedy can be to call the owner. And if it isn't remedied quickly, then it's a violation. But to have it be an automatic violation seems quite a different standard than others in the neighborhood have to follow. We are licensed fee, five hundred dollars is very high compared to other Door County S T R license fees which ranged from forty-five dollars to three hundred dollars. I thought the law indicates that fees charged must be in relation to cost. We'd like to learn what costs will require this level of fees. Thank you for your time and consideration, Michael Surveys, seventy-six seventy-five Elton Point, Roll of Bailey's Harbor, Wisconsin. So that was that one. Then there was also a letter received from Mitch Ely. My name is Mitch Ely. My wife Katie and I have a deep connection and love for Door County and recently purchased a second home located in our favorite town, Sister Bay. While we have and will continue to use our home as a second home for us to visit and bring our family to Sister Bay, we also rent our property out as a short-term rental while we are gone. We are active members of the Door County Vacation Rental Association, who we are writing this message on behalf of. As Door County aims to address how best to properly manage the volume of visitors in Door County and what ordinances to put in place in each municipality, we want to be sure the voice of those who own short-term rentals is heard. We love Door County and our neighbors and want to be good neighbors and citizens. To that end, S T R owners have formed the Door County Vacation Rental Association to provide education for owners and to partner with municipalities on S T R related issues. We have formed a nonprofit organization with the state and run a Facebook page, home sharing hosts of Door County with over four hundred members. Our vision, our group's aim is to enhance home sharing experiences for hosts, neighbors, and guests through education, best practices, and creating a more welcoming and equitable home sharing community. How we support our community, we maintain our relationships with our neighbors. It's important to note the vast majority of homes that host guests have wonderful relations with their neighbors. In fact, many of the neighbors rent those properties for special family gatherings. But as we all know, a percentage of small, of bad apples can damage the reputation of the vast majority. And we also believe in the Door County Tourism Zone good neighbor policy. We hold ourselves accountable. Just like you, we think those hosts that don't properly manage their properties well should be held accountable. We agree with noise, parking, and occupancy limitations and enforcement. We operate ethically. We believe in operating above the law by being permitted with debt cap, Door County Tourism Zone following ordinances and paying our taxes. We support the Door County economy. S T Rs make up over thirty percent of Door County room tax revenue. We also employ cleaners, property managers, plumbers, electricians, contractors, and other. We support folks working and living in Door County, and many of our group members live in Door County. As our group has worked with other towns, we found we have a lot in common and have significant agreement on how best to address issues brought to the town board's attention. Let us work with you to make the Sister Bay ordinance fair and effective. Here are some current concerns we have with the current proposed ordinances. And then Mr. Ely recites what, what Mr. Surveys did in his letter. In conclusion, he says, our group would like to be part of a solution for Sister Bay and request to work together with you to develop solutions that are well-informed and help advance our shared priorities. We'd be happy to share a model ordinance we've developed after working with other towns. We know mutually beneficial solutions that reflect what's best for all residents and guests in Sister Bay are achievable. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mitch Ely, on behalf of the members of the Door County Vacation Rental Association.
Thank you, Janelle. Do we? Do we have any comments or concerns from the public that anyone joining us tonight would like to express?
Raise your hand on this.
You can just raise your hand and we'll see it, Alan. Go, go ahead.
Did you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know my mute, my microphone's active.
Right, go ahead, Alan. And just let us know your address as well. You state your name and address.
Yep, my name is Alan Kroll. I live at one zero two two six Woodcrest Road in Sister Bay, just outside the village. But we do own property. I'm talking to you right now on the internet from the vacation rental we have inside of Sister Bay off of Cardinal Court. We're local. We greet our guests when they come to our homes. We tell them about the local businesses that are here. We tell them about all the attractions that are in the area that they should take advantage of. We try to be ambassadors for Door County. For everybody that comes to our house, we personally meet them when they arrive. So one of the things that I'd like to say is, you know, having a, being a good neighbor is important to me. Being, our guests being good neighbors is also very important. And as we move forward, you know, through this process, you know, I think a lot of us would like to have the opportunity to participate in helping to shape things and help everybody understand how it is we function and how we work within the community. So we're, I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm just speaking for myself and my wife. You know, we're here in the community. We're active in the neighborhood. We try to be the best neighbors we possibly can. We know the people around our home that we have for rent. We've personally met with them over time. We've never had an incident at our property. And we have a lot of very interesting families that come through our properties. We've had ninetieth birthday parties, you know, for our family. Almost everybody comes to our home is, is a family coming to enjoy a vacation in Door County. We have never had a party house and we really never want to have that type of environment. And we're just, we're just trying to be good neighbors and be good participants in the community here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Any other comments or concerns from the public?
I just want to say a quick word.
Yes, Karen, and your address, do your name and address, please.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Karen Barron. I live in Bailey's Harbor at eighty-six oh eight Moonlight Bay Drive. But I have two rental properties in Sister Bay, both of which are on North Woods Drive, and we're real happy to have that. We've been there for nine years or so with one and just finished building a new log cabin. Of interest, I'm also a business owner in this area. I own Harbor Fish Market and Grill in Bailey's Harbor and have been doing that gladly for twenty-three years. So I see the S T R issue from both sides. I have to tell you that without S T Rs, even if I was not an owner, I would have a great deal of problem keeping customers in my restaurant. I'd probably guesstimate that about fifty percent of our guests are coming from S T Rs, are coming as family units up here to enjoy and experience it. Also serve on a lot of committees within the county, and I'm happy to do that, but could see it from all different angles. Two of the things that I've read over the ordinance being prepared tonight really concern me. First one is, is, as was mentioned before, my Michael, is the pet issue. We are pet friendly and we do have guidelines for our pet owners, and they are quite severe. If you have a problem with our pet, we will be asking you to leave, you know, that sort of thing. And we've had an issue with a neighbor at one point that was an issue, and we took care of it right away, I think, to their and our agreement that it was well done. Somebody let their pet off their leash, which is not something we do. And the second item that I'm kind of concerned about is the cost factor that's come up in this ordinance proposal. I have properties in Fish Creek, Egg Harbor, Bailey's Harbor, and Sister Bay. So I've applied for licenses in all those communities. I've heard that it's going to be up to twenty-five hundred dollars now potentially for an S T R. I first heard five hundred, and that was concerning enough. I think it's going to deter a lot of people. I think it's going to create a problem that we don't need to have. Certainly, Sister Bay benefits from having some good neighbors like this, and I agree with regulations. I agree with guidelines. I agree with all of the zoning permits, and we do all the health department permits. I think that's a necessary thing to have, but to make it inaccessible or unrealistic for people who are just doing this as a part-time business just doesn't seem practical to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Kimberly, please state your full name and address. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Kimberly Hazen. I'm actually a permanent resident in Madison, but I'm also the landlord of the Stony Ridge Apartments on Ava Hope Court and have a couple vacation renter rentals. Ava Hope Court is full-time renters and there's no S T R activity allowed in the lease, but I also have some, two short-term rentals in the area. I think this is just a really, like, a balancing act between what's good for, what's good for the community, what will keep everybody toeing the line, which we have all expressed, that's very, very important. And then also the really delicate balance of dissuading folks from actually doing S T R business. And what I'm afraid of is, you know, the fees being super high could deter that. And so if the ordinance is to deter and reduce the number of S T Rs in the area, you know, you guys probably know how to write it. Seveste Paul wanted a seven-day minimum, and that would have killed, you know, the Door County beautiful weekends, but I think it's important to continue to remember that we're a community that offers a variety of lodging options, which is what brings people to Door County. There are folks that want to stay at the Scandinavian. There are folks that want to stay at the New Door. They want to, they want to have that hotel experience. They want folks to carry in their luggage, all that great stuff. And then there are families that, you know, for whatever reason, and some of it could be affordability, they want to, they want to be in a house. They want to be able to cook their meals. They want to run to the Piggly Wiggly and buy a bottle of wine and sit on the deck. It's a variety that we want to offer in Sister Bay and in Door County as a whole, and we want to be cognizant of the fact that ordinances can reduce some of that activity, and then if some people, if they want to stay in that type of lodging and they can't find that option in Sister Bay, they may go somewhere else, and they may actually go to Lake Geneva. So, I mean, we want to be careful that we're still able to offer the, the choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other comments this evening? Michael, go ahead.
Michael Survey seventy-six seventy-five on Point Road. Thank you for taking the time to read in my letter. I just wanted to share, we've been in business for a long time, and we have a property in Kangaroo Lake that we ran, another one in, in Fish Creek. And last year, we started sending our best rules that they have to agree to with a contract. And we had a family scheduled for vacation, and they replied back. They ended up canceling the reservation and going someplace else, and, and I asked them why, and they basically said they've traveled all, all over the world and never had to comply with so many rules and regulations, and they felt uncomfortable coming to our property. So that's where it went from, and so I would hope that you guys take some of that in consideration. We have to respect our guests and, you know, and I totally agree, you know, there's definitely rules and, and things that need to be put in place, but we can't overwhelm them with those type of things. And then also concerned about the cost of the fees. You know, anywhere is from a couple hundred dollars is, is definitely workable with us, but if you get up into that higher twenty-five hundred dollar range, it would be a challenge for many of the homeowners. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other commentary this evening?
Mitch has his hand raised, Rob.
Okay, Mitch.
Hi, everybody. Nice to meet everybody. For those of you that I haven't met before, but my name's Mitch Ely. My wife Katie and I live down in Jackson, Wisconsin, down kind of by Milwaukee. So obviously, you guys read out the letter that, that we sent and, and Michael sent a similar one. So I guess my only commentary is just that we, obviously, as, as hosts, and you've heard this from a lot of people, you know, we, we love Door County and want to be a part of the community in any way we, in any way we can, and, you know, we're hopeful that you guys, as a, as a group, will, will consider the feedback from, from our group in the, in the drafting of this ordinance. So that's all that I have. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Any other commentary this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to move us along in the agenda. We have, I do not believe we have Dave Leanout present, which means we would be skipping item number one, the report on county activities. I do not see Dave connected, so we'll head right to agenda item number two, discussion regarding an agreement with Mark Richard of Mr. Wildlife for Domestic Animal Control Services. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. Tasha, will you please take the lead on this one?
So I've attached the contract that is being proposed by Mark Richard. We've been working with Mr. Richard for a number of years. And honestly, the last couple of years, we've been working without, without a contract. That puts Mark Richard at risk as he does not carry separate insurance. He is considered an employee of ours and therefore covered under our work comp. So if he would get bit by a dog when he is retrieving that dog, then we would be able to cover him without a contract stating that, obviously, he's at risk. So the cost here is increased from what we've seen in the past. We do not use his services all that often. But as you can see, this is, this is what is being proposed, is it's a hundred dollars a month plus thirty-five dollars per call with standard mileage and twelve dollars for overnight care of an animal. We have never paid for overnight care of an animal to date, so I, I don't think that that's a common occurrence. So you're looking at about twelve hundred to maybe fifteen hundred dollars a year instead of around six hundred dollars a year.
Any questions for Tasha?
No, I have none.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're approving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, discussion regarding the request from Void Enterprises, DBA Country Walk BP, Lisa Void Agent, that a Class A liquor license be issued for the property located at twenty-four thirty-one South Bay Shore Drive for the period February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. Heidi?
So as you know, Country Walk BP already has a Class A beer license. They've decided to expand their inventory and are requesting to sell intoxicating liquors at this time. It's pretty standard request.
I will motion that we approve.
I'll make the motion.
I made the motion. We just need a second, Scott.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Skipping item number four as earlier noted. Item number five, discussion regarding the village trustee compensation schedule and related ordinances, bylaws, and statutes. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. I'm going to turn this one over to Diana, Interim Administrator.
Yeah, so this, this came up at a earlier meeting, and the board had asked me to look into correcting the issue or the matter. But Tasha had looked into it further, and actually, the state statutes say that it can, we, we were thinking that it would go into effect after the next election, but it actually has to take place before the filing of papers. So nothing can be done with this until the next time for filing papers, so I'm proposing that we wait on it while staff, while we have more opportunity to review and figure out how to make the necessary changes because at this point, nothing can change anyway.
Okay, we'll take your recommendation to table until the appropriate time. Denise?
Would that appropriate time be after the election? I don't really want to push it off all the way till fall.
I agree, and, and I don't intend to go very far with it. The reason why I'm asking for a little bit more time is because at one point, it was adopted by ordinance, a different time, there is a resolution done and once as a motion. So just because it's, I'm trying to figure out how to navigate that, and so I just need a little bit more time, but I, I was thinking spring, early summer at the latest.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
So Heidi, if you can make a note to, let's follow up with Diane prior to the April board meeting and get some, have some status to present to the board on that, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Item number six, discussion regarding the status of the technical assistance grant application that was submitted to the Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission by Interim Administrator Diane Wessel with respect to updating the Village of Sister Bay twenty-year comprehensive plan and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. Diane?
So we, we ended up putting in a, two applications. One is for, as we talked about at the board. So we, we ended up putting in a, um, applet, two applications. One is for, a- as we talked about at the board level that. The last meeting, uh, regarding the comprehensive outdoor rec plan. If, uh, you may recall that in order to qualify for certain types of D N R, D N R recreational funding. Uh, whatever is to be funded must be in an adopted corp. Um, and the village's, uh, comprehensive outdoor rec plan was last adopted in, I believe it was fourteen. So I submitted an application, um, for Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission's assistance, uh, to the village for the update of that plan. And I also submitted a second, I identified it as a second priority, one of, uh, a site design. Conceptual site design for the property that the village recently purchased. Um, because sometimes the Bay Lake, the regional planning commissions, um, grant more than one. Technical assistance request, so I submitted both. The RPC has since contacted me and. Asked if the village would prefer to have, if we, if the village was granted this, would the village prefer to have all forty hours? Um, allotted to the one project, or would the village prefer to have twenty hours? For each of the submitted applications. So that's what I'm bringing to the board to find out if, if there's a preference.
Denise?
I thought at last month's meeting that we talked about splitting those hours to get the ball rolling on each of them.
I agree.
Originally, the, the one that we had talked about at the last meeting was, um. I'm trying to remember, I thought we had talked about the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive outdoor rec plan. But the, I, I guess I, I may have misunderstood it as I thought that the comprehensive plan. Um, was a lower priority because of the property that the village had recently purchased and then the need for the corp. So. I apologize if I, if I was presumptuous and got that wrong, but I didn't have the comprehensive plan, the big one that had all. You know, all of the nine elements, the land use, the, you know, all of those different parts of it. I did not have in there. That's the one that we were going to submit a grant for. In the fall, in twenty-twenty, August of twenty-two. So this other one came up where we were thinking, you know, when I say we as in with, with staff, just talking about a little about that property that was purchased. So. Um, again, I, I apologize if I got that wrong. The last time we had talked some about the comp plan.
Denise?
My, my recollection was is because we were, we're going to file in the fall for the larger grant. Uh, for the twenty-year comp plan, but there was some preliminary work that we could get done now. That would move things along, um, that process. And I believe, uh, I talked about that the outdoor rec plan was only twenty-seven pages long. And that we probably only needed a small amount of help on that. Um, uh, maybe some technical assistance, uh, but otherwise, um. Most likely, uh, Parks Property and Streets Committee can probably, um, revamp that, uh. Once we get some technical assistance on our own and just because it's such a, a smaller document. That it's less cumbersome and definitely less technical than the twenty-year comprehensive plan. So I really thought that we were going to try to split it twenty-twenty, get done as much as what we could on each of them. To, and then, um. Wait until the fall to apply for the larger grant for the twenty-year comp. And hopefully by fall, have the outdoor rec, um, updated and, uh, implemented.
And, and now that you mentioned that, I do recall that, I think I got that wrong. Um, so I unfortunately did not put in for the larger comprehensive plan. So I guess my suggestion, I, I see your point on the. Corp being a smaller, um, undertaking. So maybe split the corp and then the other one that I had put in was for the, uh, conceptual design, because. So we don't, you know, in, in-house, we don't have the expertise or the software for that. Um, so I, I would suggest we, we split it for those two because unfortunately I. Made a mistake and I did not put it in for the comprehensive plan. Um, but I did direct them to put in the grant application on behalf of the village. Um, in August twenty-two, so that was, I, I apologize, that was my mistake.
Uh, do we have consensus among board members that that, we can proceed with that two-path approach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So we have the outdoor rec plan and then. What did? What did you call the other, um, for the fifty-six acres?
Conceptual design.
Conceptual design.
And again, I, I apologize for having made that error.
Okay, um, because. I do not, and Chad is, uh, not, uh, with us tonight, um. I do not know where land acquisition is. I thought after last month's meeting. Um, that three meetings were supposed to be scheduled. I don't know where they are at and. On, on, on. Coming with a recommendation, um, to parks and eventually to the board. Does anybody else know that?
Uh, no, but I don't, I, 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 I feel certain from the meetings we were at together. Um, when we joined in with them and what's happened since that. They don't have any type of conceptual design in place. They don't have anyone who's a member of the committee working on that, so I, I. You know, regardless of the fact that we're not quite sure of their status as of this time, I think conceptual design. Uh, and any grant money we could get towards it for that technical. Design expertise Diane mentioned is, would, would be necessary.
And, and I agree with all of that, Rob. My question is because this committee is. We created it a year ago and, um. And I think that Parks Property and Streets should have some recommendations at this point in time. On what their vision is. I understand that they wouldn't have a conceptual design, but have they narrowed it down yet? To what it is that they want to see there, and if they have yet to do that in a year's period of time. I'm just wondering, are they going to get it done? Um, in this year to use those twenty hours of conceptual design? I mean, maybe Heidi can answer me. Were all three of those meetings scheduled and did they meet this month?
So the meetings were scheduled. They had their first meeting here in February. The March meeting. Um, Chad would like to address recreational uses of the property. And then for April, the plan was to start talking about working with Bay Lake's Regional Planning Commission to come up with a design. So he has, you know, those two meetings planned. I don't know after that, you know, what's going to be the result of that April meeting. Uh, before it would come to parks.
Okay, Miles is on that committee. I think he's raising his hand, Rob.
Miles?
I'll make this quick. Just a request, if you could, uh, if you want to do that, I think a conceptual design. Someone to steer that would be really good for our committee. I, I'm not the chair or anything, but I can, I think that people would like that, and I think, um. I and other members of the committee would, would love a, a deadline. If you want to say here, have, have a recommendation by here and then we'll have these people work with you. That might. Make that ball move even faster, so. That's my two cents.
Well, we'll, I, I mean, certainly we'll have a deadline. You know, if, if nothing is forthcoming at the committee's initiative, well, upon the conclusion of that April meeting. We'll, um. Set a certain time limit.
Yeah, that might be a good thing to do, is say, come back with your recommendation by X date and.
Yeah, so I would say you can take that back to the committee, Miles, when you reconvene in March and just say, you know, the general. Idea from the February board meeting is that the board will be expecting a plan. Um, certainly, uh, soon after the April meeting, which gives you time to. Get everyone on the thought process. Does that sound reasonable?
I think so.
Okay.
Given something to move it toward, toward you guys, you guys know where it's going, so.
Okay, and then Diane, with a timeframe like that, does that? Allow us to move for those dollars that would then? I mean, if, if we, if we put the time in to go for those conceptual design dollars now. Are, would we be expecting to receive that money before May? And would we be expecting some sort of a? Deadline? Is it, is it a, you have to use it in the calendar year in which you're granted the money or?
Well, and you're not granted money, you're granted a, an allotment of time of the professional staff's time and, um. They had, they were hoping that the, I got the impression that they were hoping that the conceptual design would be in the latter half of the year. So I think that would seem to work well with the village's schedule.
Yeah, I think we'd be finally positioned to, you know, head into summer knowing there were twenty hours of that. Support, uh, granted, you know.
And I did, and I did tell them too that we would, that the village would like the, um, comprehensive outdoor rec plan work. Early because that's something that y- y- is pressing, you'd like to get done so that you have eligibility for grants. And then my thought was that this conceptual design that, all of that would leave you in a very good position to apply for grants.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, item number seven. Discussion regarding the recommendation from the Plan Commission that the Village Board pass and adopt ordinance number two-eight-nine-zero-two-one-five-two-two. Which annexes lands that are commonly referred to as the Wilsey property to the Village of Sister Bay. And indicates that the zoning district designation for all of the land to be annexed shall be I-one industrial. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. Denise?
Rob, you used a horrible word, institutional. Not industrial. We have no industrial zoning in the village.
I, I, I apologize.
That's my fault. I typed the right, I typed the wrong word.
Alright, so it's I-one industrial and, uh, thank you for catching me. Alright, let the record show I'm six days away for, six days into, uh, post hip replacement, so. If I get, if I get a marker on that.
I'm sorry, Rob. Did Randy review this?
I haven't given him, him this version, but this is his original, just with the, uh, the. Deletion of those other two zoning district options.
Okay. So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, discussion regarding the draft of an ordinance that addresses short-term rentals of dwellings in the Village of Sister Bay. Consider a motion for action if appropriate. Do we have discussion from board members? Review of the most recent version of the draft. Denise?
I know Heidi gave us, um, a short board report, um. What she didn't state in there that, that I would like to share is that, um, Vivian was the only one who submitted. Um, comments or changes, um, to that document, um, did not hear from any of the other board members. Um, I did redline some things that she suggested. Um, and I wrote in other places where it was her recommendation. That we delete something, um, for conversation. And I do, as we work through the document, I do have, um. A couple of other things, uh, to discuss. So.
Would you like to proceed section by section, Denise, and then anyone with comments on each section can voice them in that manner?
Sure, we can just start right on page one.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions from board members on? Page sixty-five of the packet representing essentially section two, the purpose changes noted there. And if by chance anyone had comments that were not previously made. On section three and section four. Which flows into page sixty-six of our packet. Now would be the time to voice those.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move to page sixty-six. So under section five, A. I wrote Vivian suggested deleting. Um, I don't think that we should delete that. Um, A, because of, it, the Tourism Zone Commission. Um, states that you need a license even if you rent your home for one night a year.
I concur. I believe it should remain.
I'll agree with that also.
Actually, looking at it, when I went through the packet, I was like, what was I thinking? Sorry, I think I, my thought was if it's already, already required. In another one, we shouldn't. Do it again, sort of thing, but yeah, this is for our, basically saying, yeah, you need a license for us. I, I think it's just frustrating because this eliminates somebody who just, say, going out of town for a week. Wants to rent their house just for that one week. It makes it kind of crazy, but, but if that's the way the county. Tourism zone license goes, it makes sense. Okay. Um. I did highlight, um, B two, I think in one of the. I think in Heidi's summary where a couple of people had contacted her and voiced some concerns. I do think B two, um, could be, um, deleted, um, the statement that was made. Or wait. Oh no, that had to do with, um, a DAT cap saying that they couldn't, uh, get to. Uh, inspecting for three to five years. To me, that is unacceptable. Um, so I think, um, I had an idea. I called Janelle today about that. And my idea, um. Was that if DAT cap cannot come and inspect. That we ask our current building inspector Brett. Um, to see if he would be interested in that job. And, uh, Janelle did get ahold of him. He did say that he was interested in that. Um, he did say that he needed to contact DAT CP to make sure that it would be okay with them. And that, um, he would do it on an hourly basis. Granted, a two-bedroom home would be smaller and quicker to inspect than, you know, a six-bedroom home. Or something like that, and that fee would, you know, later on be determined. So that is, that is what I know about that.
So then you're saying to go ahead and keep it, Denise, or to?
No, it ha- it totally would have to be reworded.
Okay, alright, so, so. Moving forward then, we're saying B two would be rewritten.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else of note on this page that you want to reference, Denise?
Um, there also in Heidi's report, or maybe it wasn't a letter, I cannot remember. There was a comment about adding something to this section about, um, a timeframe for a right to cure. So, uh, um, for the owners to, uh, have time to, uh. Fix the issue, and I thought that that had, um, some merit. And, um, would want to possibly, uh. Add that to this section.
Sounds good to me.
So any other comments from, from the board on sixty-six?
No.
Okay. So we go to sixty-seven. Um, and B and C under section six, Vivian, um, suggested deleting both of those. Um, I, I could not remember when I was going through my notes of last month's meeting and Chad had questioned. The BTR. And all I wrote down was BTR and for the life of me, I could not remember when I was editing, uh, the document on. Comments and conversation from last month's meeting until after I had sent it to Heidi. So Chad's point was, is that if they are with a resident agent, they should not have to. Uh, register with the state and receive a business tax registration number. That is what the, um. The resident agent, uh, would already have that. That is what the um, the resident agent uh, would already have that. So I would suggest that uh, adding some verbiage, changing that around, that if it's, that you need that if you're not working with a resident agent.
And that the village would receive confirmation in either case?
Right, right.
Okay.
I think that my point there was, I thought Chad had said they already need that for the Tourism Zone license, so they would already have it.
No, without Chad, I don't know. That, that, that's was not my understanding. He said that that was more cumbersome, that they would have to deal with seventy BTRs. Okay. That's, that's what I remember. Does anybody else uh?
I recall it as you do Denise.
Scott, you're shaking your head?
I don't, I'm drawing a blank.
Okay. Okay, and then C, each rental application will be shared with the Village of Sister Bay's Assessor for Personal Property Tax Assessment. So Vivian, you can explain your comment on, on why you wanted to see that deleted?
I, I guess that's a comment because I didn't understand why it was there.
Um, like any other um, business, we pay taxes on what can, what is not attached to the building. And so if um, you are running a, a business out of your home, then why would your personal property not be taxed like any other business? Okay.
And I have been updating that list with our assessor annually. They send me a list of who they feel should be getting assessed for personal property and I go through it and I send them notifications if anyone is missing from that list.
Okay.
Okay.
In my opinion, it should remain in there as, as written.
I'm fine with that. I just, yeah, it was one of those things unless I understood.
I'll agree.
Okay. Alright, so then under E, um, this was in somebody, uh, a comment somewhere. Oh, that the Tourism Zone shall provide proof of such license by attaching a copy to the initial license application and subsequent renewal applications. That was questioned. They only file once with the Tourism Zone, so it kind of made no sense. Um, to keep attaching it to every other application, so I would suggest um, the sentence end with initial license application and delete and subsequent renewal applications.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll agree.
So the, the, one of the big changes as we found out um, through chat and conversation last month is seven-two. The the wording in there that, you know, the state does not dictate occupancy. So the only thing that we can reference for occupancy would be parking requirements. And that has been one of the largest complaints of neighbors in the neighborhood. On these houses that have X amount of bedrooms, so many cars, not enough parking space to um, hold all the cars in a driveway. And so therefore, um, that is how um, we would dictate um, occupancy. Or how many cars can just actually be there, um, how many spaces they have. Because I know that there is, I believe it is on the corner of Birchwood in Scandia, a constant problem. And when Bo was still here, they were always parking at that intersection. Um, creating a problem with the vision triangle. The road is narrow to begin with. They had too many cars there. He would go there. On quite a few weekends, he would ticket people. Um, and you know, that was just a really big safety issue, that particular home.
Okay.
Does anyone have any issue with the way it's revised as Denise has outlined?
No, I think that's good.
Yeah, I, I do as well.
In there too. I, I think we need it.
And then there was just on number four, right below that. I don't know why chapter seven was in there, but I just a typo or something. It's actually chapter four hundred of the zoning code. So that was um, brought up. So then on page sixty-eight, um, Chad made the argument that um, on number eight, all STRs must follow state and federal anti-discrimination regulations and ADA compliance. And Chad said that every hotel or motel or whatever may or may not have handicap rooms, but certainly not all of them had to be handicap accessible. I don't know if there's a certain criteria, if you have a hotel or not. But um, with his comments on that, I chose, um, he, he made a really good point. And it was unfair and therefore I struck it from, from the document.
Okay.
That's fine.
Also on that same page, he talked about, you know, insurance should we don't ask a hotel what kind of liability insurance they have, so therefore we should not ask or require um, proof of liability insurance on an STR. So that was stricken.
Okay.
Um, the property owner or agent must report or submit a monthly report was deleted. That is not necessary. And then I did add in signs depicting the short-term rental property shall not exceed two square feet. So that kind of follows um, other guidelines within the zoning code. And thought if somebody did want to put a sign out, um, that that uh, would give them the opportunity to a lot of them go by certain names on websites, on what they call their STR. Um, so I thought that would even though I don't want to see more signs, um, that would be fair.
Okay.
And then effectively then this would um, direct any current signage that is larger than two square feet to be downsized.
I don't know if any STRs do have.
I believe on Forest Lane, there's one that has a sign that's much larger than two square feet.
Okay. I haven't driven that road in a long time, so, okay.
Yeah. So, um, and then I guess that's where my question is coming from. Any would there be some sort of inherent grandfathering in of current signs, or would this make it liter, you know, necessary for someone to downsize their sign? It would appear, appear so.
No, I don't believe that there would be any grandfathering pertaining to this. Um, uh, and maybe they didn't, uh, we would have to investigate this. Um, I certainly uh, as Plan Commission Chair, uh, do not remember approving any sign. So most likely they did it without a, a sign permit application. So that would be an illegal sign.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, and then just kind of revamped H, took E away, added it up to A, again, talking about, about parking. So with those changes, did anybody else have any other questions or changes that they would like to see?
I just have a general question on parking. And it kind of applies to the Scandi issue. Is there is there any way if we chose to that we could require the property owner to clarify their expectation that on-street parking, you know, that, that, that their guests will be parking on the street.
Hey, I'm Kaylee. And I'm the owner of the house on Scandia and Birchwood. So that's probably.
Right, I'm, I'm aware of that Kaylee, hello.
Um, hi, so we are aware of one instance that there was parking on the street. Um, we have in our welcome packet and like very strict about um, making sure that people are parked in the driveway and not anywhere near the road. Um, and there was a visit from Bo in which um, he talked to the renters that were there and we talked to him because there was not a street sign that said no parking for the renters, so we asked about that. So sorry.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate, I, I appreciate you clarifying that Kaylee. And as we said earlier, we're not during, during this point on the agenda, we're not engaging uh, discussion with citizens. Um, I, I would
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would clarify for you that when I said, you know, the point I'm making pertains in part to the Scandia location reference, there's other locations within the village it pertains to when there's significant activity that parking begins, you know, on-street parking is used. And so my, my question for my fellow trustees is do we need to, want to, would we be permitted to, or think it would be beneficial just for smooth operations in the village to know throughout that application process that, yeah. Um, for instance, here's how many off-street parking spaces I have, but you know, based on how many people I can rent to, I may be having some guests park on the street.
Diane has her hand up, so maybe she answered that question.
It won't actually, mine isn't related to parking is, um, I just wanted to make a comment that the uh, you, you might want to rework the wording of the signs depicting the short-term rental property. Uh, just because I think it could be questioned with the Reed versus Gilbert case because technically that would be content-based.
But we can dictate size.
Yes, yes, you can. I'm just saying that the wording needs to be a little bit different because by saying signs depicting short-term rental property, that phrase is content-based because you'd have to read it in order to figure out that's what it is.
What about signs identifying short-term rentals?
Yeah, so it's just something that I, I just, and I can try to come up with some wording, but I just wanted to just identify that is that you might want to, you, you I, I would suggest changing the wording of that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding us of that.
So, and, and then if any, no one else has thoughts relating to my question on parking, that's fine. We can just move along. Um.
Yeah, I mean, that's some, that's something to, to think about, Rob.
And, and my, and, and where I'm going from it on is, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying from, just from a smooth operation standpoint, that for instance, somebody has a short-term rental, there's sufficient, you know, uh, people permitted to rent there. A group comes in. And they know as the owner, if a group that size comes in, they're going to be parking on the street. Simply so that we would know or that it's known to the staff, so that if calls would start coming in saying, hey, how come I've got all these cars parking on the street? Then it's real simple. Heidi or staff can, you know, look at the, the applications and say, well, you know, that those are, you know, cars related to that you know, rental property on your street, so that people would at least know what's going on and we would know.
Um, yeah, but we don't want that to happen is the point.
Well then, that's where I'm going as well. Then if, if, you know, if if we're, you know, if we want to know that parking is going to be off-street and if we're going to require parking to be off-street, then you know, I think
So you do have in sections, you do have in section seven that it's going to be off-street parking, seven-four. Do you want to maybe add, please submit a parking plan with your application?
What page on the, are you referring, uh, Heidi, what page of the packet are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I don't have the packet.
Sixty-eight, seven.
Sixty-seven.
Section It's under, yeah.
Okay, tha- that's a good point Heidi. We might have to add um, under two, we might have to add that um, they would, we would require um, a parking plan. And that way to know if they're complying with section four hundred. Yeah. Good point.
Okay. Excellent.
Yep.
I think we can move on to section eight Denise, right, or?
Yeah, I'm just writing some notes so I can make all the changes. Yes, section eight. So I um, whether it was uh, Jeff Sanders or the zoning attorney, I cannot remember which one that um, reviewed the first draft of the STR. Um, they had questioned whether the fines were enough that their experience and I don't know if fines are, if we're allowed to insert you know, any dollar amount or if like the other fines village um, leverages is uh, pertaining to state statutes. Uh, Diane, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Can, for a violation, um, we have five hundred and a thousand dollars in as a fine. And I couldn't remember if it was Jeff Sanders, um, the zoning guy or the other guy who I can't remember his name, the zoning attorney, that said if your fees are not high enough. Um, it has been, um, a lot of people just pay the fine over and over and over again, um, because they can afford to do so and it's not detrimental to their business. So there, there are some uh, fines that the village um, implements, but that is restricted by state statute. Would this apply to that also?
I'd have to look into it more typically, you know, fines for violations have a lot more discretion than fees for services kind of things. So um, the fine I'd, I would have to look into more, but that is um, I, I would agree with whoever's made that comment. Um, whether it be the attorney or Jeff Sanders. Another thing a lot of municipalities do is that they have a scale where the first offense is this, the second offense is, and then start escalating with each subsequent offense. That's a common way to deter uh, repeat offenders from just keep on paying the fines. And that's, that's really common.
Okay, alright, so that may be something is um, with Diane stating that, is that something um, that the board would be interested in implementing a, a scale for offenses once she would get clarification on uh, what those uh, fees would be?
Sounds like a good idea.
Agreed.
I'll go along with that, yep.
Okay. So does anybody have anything else on page sixty-nine?
Just one comment and I typed this in the um, uh, chat box is that you guys had talked about regarding a parking diagram. That actually looks like section eight, item C. Already in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It says a diagram of the property identifying the property lines and the location of off-street parking, including the maximum number of off-street parking spaces provided for renters.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You can go.
So page seventy, now we get to the fees. And originally five hundred dollars uh, was inserted. And at last month's meeting And at last month's meeting, um, there was quite a bit of discussion on why are we writing this? And Chad was asking that question and he said, are we writing it just to write it? And I said, no. I said, the biggest complaint that I receive as a trustee are issues that neighbors have with their STRs. And that there is no accountability, no one they can call other than the police. Um, and maybe sometimes the police don't even want to, you know, show up for a particular call or there's nothing that they can do about it. Um, and so some of those bad apples or bad, bad renters, um, just kind of get away with it. So it's really all about accountability and keeping our residential neighborhoods residential. I, we had no choice when the legislature passed Act sixty-seven or fifty-one or whichever one it is, I get, I cannot remember. Um, that stated that this would be allowed um in all residential districts. And so I think in the beginning, it didn't seem so bad, but now that more and more homes are being bought at inflated uh prices, people are um using them as STRs creating more congestion. I also understand what uh everybody who spoke under comments and correspondence earlier tonight that these people uh do put money back into the economy, which is true, but how much can any one community handle? And price, home prices were already high before. And so there was a lot of conversation on how do we do more? And I know for workforce housing, people that live here year-round and um are trying to make a life here that want to stay here, that work in the service industry. And also, you know, it was stated in a letter or maybe somebody also said it earlier under comments was that, you know, a lot of local people are hired um to do the cleaning and other work. I have no idea what kind of wages those are. If those are good-paying jobs, how many hours a week any one cleaning these homes is actually getting, especially if it's, if it's a weekly rental? So the conversation was by upping it to twenty-five hundred is taking that two thousand dollars additionally and putting it towards a workforce housing fund to offset I don't want to say some of the damage that's been done, but for the lack of a better word, sorry, that seems a little negative. Trying to, trying to solve some of our bigger problems so we can keep younger people here, young families and uh have a workforce that, that we can count on. So for all those listening, that is where that dollar amount came from. Um, it was not decided exactly if we wanted to do that, but Chad also kept saying, you know, there has to be a bigger purpose for us. And if we were to do that, you know, that would be a, if I think there's sixty-eight, seventy STRs in the village from my memory from when we uh get minutes from the tourism zone. So, and even if I'm off, if there's sixty, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year um that uh we could possibly do something with. And um I don't want to uh dive deep into this um on whether we should or we shouldn't. We're going to talk about it under uh legal matters in closed session, and I think we can have a, a broader conversation there um where everybody can, you know, we can hear what Diane has to say and, and have other commentary um about those fees.
And I would just add to that, that um those of us can recall in prior meetings, we've had uh committee members um who are professional, you know, uh professional Realtor committee member as well as other Realtors give feedback to committees and, and, and board members regarding the propensity of calls coming in to the village and to real estate businesses being most predominantly related to, I want to buy a house to make into a short-term rental. We've had commentary significantly from real estate professionals, et cetera, uh saying it's the number one force that's driving home prices to sick routinely sell above asking price and drive higher and higher asking prices. Um, from, from my standpoint to, to shape, you know, my sentiment um a little differently than the way Denise expressed hers. Well, I, I agree with everything she said. From my standpoint in supporting that amount of the fee, the twenty-five hundred for the reasons noted, to do something for affordable housing, in my mind, I don't believe in that in terms of deterring STRs. I don't look at that as a number that's come up to deter STRs. I solely look at it as a pro, an appropriate fee based on the average gross revenue that most of the STRs are going to do. I respect and appreciate hearing, you know, some comment, some commentary this evening about the not great frequency of particular properties, um, and how, you know, it might be rented one or two weeks a year. Um, and I, and I, and I understand that I appreciate those comments, but the bottom line is the people that are driving the real estate market mad um up here are not inquiring about wanting to own a home for short-term rental that they're only going to rent for a week or two a year. Um, when you look at the average gross, you know, if you just take a look at, you know, what average rentals are as listed in all the advertising and through a general knowledge of how often there's people there through the season, it's easy to get a frame of reference that for the vast majority of short-term rental owners, it's not going, you know, having a fee of twenty-five hundred versus five hundred is not going to cause them to need to cease being a short-term rental. That is my opinion. Uh, and um, again, I don't in any way in supporting that amount of a fee, I did not in any way look at it as trying to deter STRs. I look at it as charging them appropriately based on the revenue coming in. Yes, Denise?
And, and just to piggyback on, on what you were saying, the research uh that I did earlier today on um some uh websites and uh most places in July and August, which is the highest rate um charged, it would you know, the average home was charging twenty-five hundred dollars a week. Well, you know, some were over four thousand, larger homes, larger occupancy. So some people it would be a half a week. And that would be the cost of, of doing business, or if it's a smaller home, it's one week. So I also think that uh it is a fair cost of business, um, trying to address the severe workforce housing situation that we are in. But like I said, we'll also talk about more of that in, in closed session.
That's, yeah, guys, sorry I wasn't here. Um, I, I just catching that last part. I, and I'm, hopefully I missed it, but what, what's the plan with that money?
Uh, that has workforce, doing something for workforce housing, which we would have um yet to determine um how that would all work, what would have to be set up. I mean, it just in a, an off-the-cuff conversation that I had with Rob today. And uh, he's like, you know, we can take that hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year and uh build a house a year on the fourteen lots that the village has.
And, and, and things like that are, I'm great with. I just don't want us to not have that in place before something, because if it's not in place and I want to be a part of that conversation because I, I, I know I've dropped that idea before. I, it needs to be in place before we pass it, otherwise I, I would never be for it.
Absolutely, Chad. It's gotta be, and that's to, not just to have it in place for the vote, but to ensure that it's known, this is where we're heading.
And to go back to the market, um, just what I caught on your, there, there's, there's also plenty of smaller places that rent for nine hundred dollars a week. You know, and granted, we all feel like those homes should be year-round housing, but they're also homes that people bought with the hopes of retiring that they can't afford a home that can rent for five thousand dollars a week. So we just have to be very conscientious that uh you know, there's, there's been a lot of people that have done this for a lot of years long before there was the perceived problem that that will be forced out of it and be forced to probably sell their house. Just, you know, be aware of that, right? It's not everybody just came in in the last two years gobbling these up, driving the rates up. There's been people that have bought these homes that extended themselves to buy these homes um as a way for them to justify being able to get a piece of Door County like we all have a piece of Door County and be able to retire one day. And that will change for a lot of those people. And a lot of those people are, are us, right? They're not the ultra-rich. They're not somebody that's just disconnected from this community. You just gotta be cognizant of that. It's a lot deeper story than finding a couple rates online and how much you think people are getting. Uh, these are my clients, you know, I've been a lot of, I've had a lot of these clients for a lot of years. And almost none of mine are straight-up investors. You know, and the ones that are straight-up investors, there's like five rentals we have and those are not affordable homes. They're not even close. So it's a lot of people that this is their way to hopefully get a piece of Door County. And it's uh, you know, it's part of the story that needs to be told.
Okay. So then um I also thought that there was a valid issue um made under correspondence pertaining to pets and because I didn't have that highlighted in my document, um uh I would like to suggest that we also um delete the, the pet issue that they cannot leave it uh in the STR. I thought that was a, a, a valid point made, and so then delete that out of there and let the, whether it's pet-friendly or not, let the owners of the STR dictate their rules for pets.
Other than they have to be on a leash.
Out, yes, right. We do have a leash law. Yep. So then um with um all of those changes, um I will uh revamp the document again and uh bring it back next month.
That sounds great, Denise. Thank you very much for your excellent efforts leading this.
Thanks, Rob.
Nice. I'll look, excuse me, I'll look into that fines question you had and I'll, I'll be in touch with you.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, moving along, uh, item number nine, um, I have no um recommended committee and commission appointments at this time. So we'll move to item number ten, review of the financial statements and consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills. Do we have any trustees with questions for Tasha this evening?
I, I'm sorry, I did not call Tasha about this today, so I do have a couple of questions. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay.
Page seventy-five, the last entry, Robert E. Lee Construction Administration, forty-six hundred.
That's related to the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. That's pretty standard.
Okay. Um, I don't, and then on page seventy-six, um the lodge, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars TKH advertising. I don't know who is doing, who's in charge of the advertising out there. Um, but at my business downtown Sister Bay across from the marina, I cannot get the lodge in. I don't know why. And so I listened to The Goat, which comes in perfect, which I think is coming from Sturgeon Bay. Great music, by the way. So I was just wondering, because I know a lot of people listen to that also, if whoever's doing that advertising, if they possibly want to expand or not, you know, splitting it up, just, I mean, making a phone call, is, I don't know if Cody is doing it.
Cody's doing, Cody is handling the advertising for the ice rink for sure.
Okay. So I just thought it was just a suggestion.
Pass that along.
Okay.
Sounds like, yeah.
And what he does with that is up to him. Um Janelle, did you get a new laptop?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
This, this one was really slow.
And it, is it, is it like a regular laptop or one of the surfaces like ours?
It's a regular laptop.
Okay. All right. And then, let's see. Page seventy-eight. Anthem Blue Cross, we have a February premium of almost twenty thousand dollars and then a March premium of only sixteen thousand dollars. A loss of employee.
Yep, so um February's premium, there was Anthem made an error in transferring one of our employees over and dropped a dependent. And so one of those is a makeup for one, and then there's an employee that came off of it and a dependent that came off of it. So then there's credits back for previous months.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that I had.
I just have one question for you, Tasha.
Yeah.
Snow thrower. Five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And snow blower parts, seventy dollars, ninety-four cents. Does that mean we bought and we needed a new snow blower? And then we were, we're also still repairing an old one or the repairs on the old one led us to say, no more parts, we're buying a new one?
Yep. No, those would be two separate snow machines. One, one, a new purchase of a small snow thrower and one um repair on a different one.
So when, when we have, and that's for the ice rink or for a general village use?
No, that would be for Parks and Streets Department or College Parks Department, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Tasha this evening? Hearing none, I will motion that we approve the monthly bills as noted in Tasha's report.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Committee reports. Administrative Committee, no update. Communication Technology Committee.
We haven't met.
Okay. Coastal Byways.
Um, everything's going as planned.
DCEDC, I don't see Nate and I know Nate is no longer a part of it. I will just clarify that um regarding the current vacancy for um a trustee to be assigned to DCEDC, we will wait until I will be waiting until after the April election to make that determination. And rec uh pass it along to the board at that time. Emergency Management Plan Committee.
We're never gonna meet, Rob.
Okay, you can, that, that's fine. Finance?
Uh, has not met.
Okay. Uh, Fire Board meets Friday. Ad hoc friends of Pebble Beach.
I haven't met.
Uh, Green Tier Legacy Committee meets Monday. Historical Society.
Uh, we met on Thursday, the third. We have a his, uh, History Center fundraising update was given to us by Jill Lost, uh, discussed membership. mailings, planning for the twenty twenty two season that pretty much covers the meeting.
Thank you, Scott. Ad hoc Land Acquisition Committee.
I had a meeting last week. It was a productive meeting. We had Emile from the post office who, you know, gave us a lot of background information on if, what, how we would go about it if something would happen for us to build an administration building with a post office attached to it on on the multi properties. So I feel like it's, you know, we learned a lot. There's still a ways to go. Next meeting, we're going to talk about recreation, and then I'm hoping to kind of turn it over to that firm we hired start doing some preliminary, you know, ballpark drawings for us to give us something to dream about.
And in that regard, Chad, this evening, before you joined on, I believe we had Miles weigh in on a few things, and we clarified that considering you're going to be meeting again in March and then April, there's some design, technical assistance, design grants that Diane will be working towards attaining that would be essentially usable if granted to us, you know, later in the year. And that we asked Miles if we did not hear from you tonight to pass along to you and the rest of the committee members that essentially we'd be looking as a board to hear about a plan, you know, your your summary plan as to where things are at at this point in time after your April meeting, you know.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Library Commission.
I believe you have the minutes and the librarian's report. She had asked us to notice in the the figures that because we're paying to have the library open on Thursdays, that it actually does get quite a bit of use on Thursday. So just other than that comment, everything's there in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
Yes.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
I don't know if I've missed it on review and approve the bills for the library, but is the Department of the Treasury Medicare something new? I don't remember seeing that. The on page eighty one.
Yeah, I don't from my tenure back in time on the Library Commission, I don't recall. I don't have recollection of a charge like that.
Would it be that the new employee is younger and has to pay into Medicare?
But why would our library be footing that bill?
It looks like Social Security Medicare is just FICA tax.
But why are we paying that?
The the village always pays those expenses.
We're an employer, we pay half.
So that must be.
Remember them being on on the report to the bills before.
It's probably just lumped with payroll. Maybe.
That's and that's probably why I don't remember.
But there's no payroll on here either.
Right.
Oh, because that would come from Tasha, right?
Right.
No.
No.
No, I don't pay the library employees.
Okay, well.
Vivian, does this have to do with Ralph's replacement?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, we'll check into it and find out.
Okay.
All right. I I think I I think it might have something to do with Ralph's replacement and what's splitting up between the town and the village and and their shares of that. Okay. Thank you, Vivian. I do not see Pat with us yet, so Marina Committee will take a pass. Not having Pat with us.
Marina. They're in there, Rob.
Yeah.
Questions.
Yeah. Yeah, we're.
May I interrupt for one minute? Scott, what did you say about the Historical Society? I missed that.
Look at my notes here. Had a his History Center update from Jill Lost, planning for the twenty twenty two season, and we discussed sending out a membership mailing.
Okay. Thank you.
Marina Fest, Scott?
Has not met, Rob.
Ad hoc Outdoor Rec and Transportation Plan Commission, Nate will be leading this for us. And for those of you who are aware of it from the last parks meeting, the Town of Liberty Grove agreed to join the village in meetings to begin proactively and productively moving forward with the topic of roads, expansion of roads, widening of roads, bike lanes, pedestrian walkways, et cetera. And so that meeting will be had, their first meeting will be happening later this month, and ultimately, then that'll roll under this new committee designation, which will report back up to parks. Speaking of parks, Parks Property and Streets, well, there's, we'll meet again on March seventh. Personnel Committee has not met since our last meeting. Plan Commission, Denise.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
And to just yeah, that is, I was correct to say Personnel Committee has not met since our last, since our last meeting. SBA, beyond what's in the packet, I would just mention that Louise announced that we officially have our new, SBA has our new assistant coordinator. Ellie Soderberg is joining the team. She was previously the full time coordinator for Bailey's Harbor, and she is coming on board to be Louise's assistant. She'll be out on some maternity leave. But the expectation at this time is Louise is targeting May first for a start date for Ellie. From everything we hear, this is a big win for the village and for SBA. And certainly Louise deserves a lot of the congratulations for, you know, running a vibrant organization the way she does, that there's interest in a person of this caliber to come join us. Tourism Zone Commission meets Thursday. Utilities has not met. Youth Center has not met. Do we want a motion to accept committee reports, Janelle?
Yep.
I will, I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item number eleven, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one to consider employment promotions, compensations, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conduct other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. At seven forty PM, I motion that we move into closed session.
Second.
Janelle, will you handle roll call, please?
Sure. Baker?
Aye.
Burdo?
Yes.
Kadunko?
Yes.
Nino?
Yes.
And Zaski.
Yes. So we will, we are now in closed session, and Heidi, if you could move. Second. Roll call, Janelle, please.
Burdo?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Um, Nino?
Yes.
Kadunko?
Yes.
And Zaski.
Yes. Okay, we are back in open session, and I am going to ask Janelle to read our first motion.
Okay, the Village Board authorizes the amendment to the expenditure of four hundred sixty thousand dollars for infrastructure costs related to the multifamily attainable housing development that Mosaic Development will be constructing on the twelve point six acre lot in the Stony Ridge Development. It has been assigned parcel number one eight one five one zero 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 two A that will be known as the Shoals to six hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Question. Janelle, the twelve point six was for the entire parcel. They split that into three.
Okay. So should I do it on the lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you have the parcel number, right?
Yeah.
The new parcel number for the CSM split.
I don't have that yet. On one of the lots, should I see?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's three, aren't there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that it, that one, you just have to take a vote on that then, Rob.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Janelle, if you would please read the second motion.
That the Village Board passes and adopts ordinance number two ninety four zero two one five two two. It repeals section three point two of chapter three of the Village of Sister Bay Court of Ordinances, and also directs staff members to see that section four sub D is deleted from the Village of Sister Bay Committee Commission bylaws and rules of order in its entirety.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Do we have any item at this time to note for a future agenda other than what was discussed this evening? Hearing none, before I motion to adjourn, I just, I I told staff earlier, I just want to tell my fellow trustees, thank you very much for the cards that came in the mail, genuinely appreciated very much. Thank you. And with that, at ten oh seven PM, I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Rob, are you going to talk to Diane now?